Six thirty PM, November sixth, two thousand nineteen. I'd like to call tonight's session of the City of Delaware Planning Commission to order. Could the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Here.
Mr. Vonek?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Here.
Chairman Simpson?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, the approval of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on October second, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. It's the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Prawl?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mansoris?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd indulge me for a second, we have our new Assistant City Manager. Not brand-new. Been here for a little while, Kyle Kreidler, if you want to come up. And I just wanted to take a second to introduce Kyle to you, or let Kyle introduce himself to you as a planning commission. As staff, we're very excited to have him on board. He's hit the ground running, has come to us most recently from Dublin, and lots of great ideas and lots of interaction with us as department head and staff, and we're just really excited he's on board. Kyle?
Well, thank you very much. Good evening. Glad to be here. I guess I'm about six months in, so I don't know if you can still milk the honeymoon, but I'm going to anyways. Just been exciting, great staff, great community, just very, very excited to be a part of all the growth. From everything that I've read through Morpsy, and you know, you can just see it with your own eyes, everything's coming north. So, just an exciting time to be a part of Delaware. Great people, great community, great staff, great boards and commission and council members. So, just excited for this opportunity in my career, continue to build relationships and do the right type of development that's best for everyone. So, I'm always a resource among staff, and I look forward to building relationships with all of our boards and commissions. And I would just, you know, welcome anyone that ever wants to go and grab some coffee or some lunch and just, you know, we can pick each other's brains. Love to do that and build relationships with everyone here.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I'll say, Kyle, we have an outstanding planning commission. I mean, they've seen every development cases come forward, and some of them have been difficult, some of them have been easier, and they just do an outstanding job for the community, from my perspective. So, and I've worked with a lot of boards and commissions and planning commission, they do a great job, to so you know. And they're here, too. They know, I think, then.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number three on our regular meeting agenda, regular business. Could the clerk please read item A into the record?
Item A, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three forty-six, a request by Connect for approval of a combined preliminary and final development plan to expand Green Dental Office on approximately zero point nine nine one acres on property zone B three, Community Business District, and located at one thirty-three West Hall Drive.
I'll be giving the presentation tonight. The subject property is located on the south side of West Hall Drive, just behind the Delaware Community Plaza. As you can see here, the property is zone B three, Community Business District, as are the properties to the north, south, and east. To the west is a neighborhood zoned R two for one-family residential, and to the southeast is a small neighborhood in the township, zoned FR one for farm residential. And here we have an aerial, so you can see the existing dental office, which is two thousand six hundred eighty-five square feet, and the existing parking lot. The applicant is proposing an expansion to both. The new building addition would be seven hundred and forty-five square feet. And as a note, just to note the busyness of them, when Lance and I were out to visit the site a few weeks ago, there was only one parking spot in the middle of the day, so they're definitely experiencing a lot of success right now. Here is the proposed layout for the development. The yellow indicates the existing building, the red is the proposed addition, the black outlines the parking lot, with the shaded portion being the new parking lot. Some trees will be removed for this expansion. The applicant has submitted a tree plan included in the packet that'll designate which trees would be removed and which trees would be replaced. Staff will work with them to ensure that chapter eleven sixty-eight of the tree preservation is met. This will probably be a combination of, you know, less trees being removed, trees being planted, and a fee in lieu of. Here's a rendering of the proposed addition to the building. As you can see, this addition will continue the existing design and quality of the existing building, be a fair bit of brick here on the elevation. In summary, the existing dental office has been running very successfully. This proposed addition will allow them to add more space for customers, as well as accommodate the parking for that. The proposed expansion meets the good quality of design of the existing layout, and staff is in support of this proposal with ballistic conditions. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, I'd just say that Dr. Green's been a longstanding business owner in this community, done a, I think, done a great job there on, at his location. Appreciate his interest in expanding within our community. Mostly a parking lot expansion, as it turns out, but a little bit of the building as well on his site. I do feel a little sympathy with him with respect to the trees you saw documented in the staff report. He planted a lot of those, so it's, you know, I guess at this point, he's probably wishing he had maybe hadn't or had planted them somewhere else, but we'll work through those issues with him as well, staff. He's got options in the condition within your staff report, but appreciate your interest in expanding your business in the city, Dr. Green. Happy to answer any question.
Any questions for staff? No? I'll invite the applicant to come forward, if they're here this evening. If you could just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Robert Green. I'm the owner of the building. This is my partner, Jim Leckie. I came in about two years ago. I built that in, roughly, two thousand, went in there. My father was a dentist in town for forty years, started in sixty, just to give you some history, longstanding of our practice. We have the diploma in our office that goes back to nineteen oh five. It was based four since. So, this practice has a lineage in Delaware of over a hundred years. It went from father to son, to my father, to me. And part of the reason for the expansion is my son lives in the fourth year, so he'll be in there next year. So, it's kind of, I don't know, it's kind of a cool thing, I guess, to have your son come in with you. Jim's been an excellent partner. Like was stated, our business is doing very well, and parking is an issue. Something we want to expand the parking lot, we also want to expand all of those things. And, you know, we thank you for the consideration. Last thing is, I graduated from Delaware Heights, went to Ohio Westside. I've always been very proud of helping this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just get your address for the record?
Well, my office is one thirty-three West Hall Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have none. Doc, I've got one question, and that is, driving up and down twenty-three between Columbus and Delaware, all these dental offices that are going out?
Tell me about it.
If you can, just give me an idea, what is going on in your industry?
Well, dentistry is expanding services, really. Probably the biggest expansion is the implants, which is part of the reason for the expansion of our property, is to bring in a device, it's called a CBT scan, and that helps us plan and plan and design implant cases. It's also very good for detecting bone tumors and things of that nature. Essentially, what happens is, you take an X-ray of someone, and on the computer, it will design a three-D model of their jaw, which Jim and I can sit there on the computer and actually treatment plan your case before we ever put a drill in your mouth, which is outstanding. The other thing is, we have integral scanners in our office, so we can actually scan your dentition as it is, we can combine the two images, and then also be able to digitally design the, I'd say like a new crown or something from that. So, when you see all the expansion of dentistry, that's part of it. Plus, unfortunately, this is where the population center's moving, from Columbus. And as the population center moves, so do services. And I think you see that.
Definitely.
One thing I would say, as a plus for our office, is our longstanding history and our good reputation has always been something that brought people, we have people from Kentucky to, you name it, who come up and see us. And, you know, I have generations of patients. I mean, I have generations going back to my father, second, third, fourth generations of patients who've been in that office. So, it's just been a plus. Why twenty-three, I don't know. I think it's probably more the Lewis Center environment and all that. But I think, you know, as you see the population centers start to move more towards Delaware, you probably can get a little bit more, you know? But part of this is, you know, we need to compete, too, you know? And we feel we offer great services in Delaware. You don't need to go set up at my office.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public here this evening who wish to comment on this particular case? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion we approve twenty nineteen twenty-three forty-six, along with all staff's recommendations and...
Motion by Mr. Halter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonek?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on tonight's agenda, could the clerk please read item B into the record?
Item B, Enclave at the Ravines at Olentangy, case one, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three forty-four. A request by TNR Properties for approval of a preliminary development plan for Enclave at the Ravines at Olentangy, containing eighty-seven single-family attached units on approximately fourteen point nine zero six acres on property zoned R six PMU, multi-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located on the north side of Curve Road and west of Rochdale Run?
Rockdale.
I'm sorry?
Rockdale.
Case two, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three forty-five, request by TNR Properties for approval of preliminary subdivision plat for Enclave at the Ravines at Olentangy, containing eighty-seven single-family attached units on approximately fourteen point nine zero six acres on property zoned R six PMU, multi-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district located on the north side of Curve Road and west of Rockdale Run.
Thank you. Yeah, this entire development, it's about a hundred twenty-one acres, was approved back in two thousand four to the residential planned office institution on M one PMU. The portion that we're discussing tonight, the southern portion of it, is actually the R six portion of the PMU. It's a relatively flat site as we speak. Just to give you some history of this development, it actually was approved in five sub-areas. Subarea one, which is in the center, is the single-family subarea. They're actually building houses out there today. Subarea two is in this area, it's the duplexes. I think there's eighteen duplexes that were approved and platted. Subarea three is the area we're discussing, and it's, it allowed up to ninety condominium-type units. Subarea four, which was in this area, was merged into subarea one about a year ago. It was an assisted living, and they didn't move forward with that, so they just wanted to include it in the single-family subarea. And subarea five is about a thirty-acre flex office manufacturing type uses permitted there. So, the area we're looking at is the extreme southern portion of the site. Also, in two thousand six, the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas issued a consent decree and entry pertaining to this site, which the several requirements shall be adhered to by the city. This is the entire development as submitted, and again, we're looking at the yellow portion and the southern portion of the site. This is the actual development. There's actually eighty-seven attached, single-family units proposed on the site. Currently, engineering is reviewing the site from a preliminary perspective, the stormwater and traffic and access and the like. The utilities would be, from the city, sanitary water would be extended out to the site. They would be all private, except along Rockdale Drive, those lots front of Rockdale Drive would be public water, since water's adjacent to them. So, seventeen of those lots would have public lines. From an access perspective, the two access points are from Rockdale Drive. They would extend into and loop around the site. It'd be a private road, twenty-four-foot wide private road, built to public standards, and there'd be no parking along the roads, per the fire department's requirements. Pedestrian connectivity, there's no plan for a path along Curve Road. However, along the western portion of the entire development, there is a plan to hook in with our bike and pedestrian path in the future. Developer agreed to dedicate land in that area. Internally, there will be sidewalks on one side of the private street, which is typical for this type of development, and also on the western side of Rockdale Drive, there would be a public sidewalk that would extend down to Curve Road and connect into, to the township road at that point. As I indicated, they're proposing eighty-seven units in this development. Seventeen units would be front of Rockdale Drive. The remainder of the units would be, the remaining seventy units would be within the private streets and private development. Within the development, there's twenty overflow parking spaces throughout the development for the visitors and the like. Also, there's a gang mailbox in this area on this, this southern portion of the site. Again, this is fairly low-density site, which they could add three more units to this, and these are attached units, similar to the enclave at Adelaide that we approved a few years back. It seemed like they'd been successful for that developer. The front yard setbacks would range from eighteen to twenty-five feet, depending on the exact location. Each unit would have a two-car garage. The minimum house size would be twelve hundred square feet per approved development text. And some of the lots would have, would be eligible for a back patio or deck. Not everybody would have that, because there's private easements throughout the site, and you can't build a deck or patio over those private easements. From a landscaping perspective, they would have to propose a comprehensive landscape plan for the final development plan. That would include street trees, shade trees, open space trees, and landscaping and permanent buffing. Along the western portion of the site is an existing tree road. Along Curve Road, in the rear of these lots that back up the Curve Road, the development text required a six-foot-high mound with landscaping with evergreen trees planted in a staggered formation, twenty feet on center. All those plants would need to be approved by the Shade Tree Commission. From an open space plan, they dedicated open space to the city, about thirteen acres in this northeastern portion of the site. That's the open space for the entire development. At some time in the future, the city will program that open space, is the plan, is my understanding. So, this specific site here doesn't have any open space, but they dedicated for the entire development when it was approved. Also, the stormwater retention ponds in the northwestern portion of the site, and that's being expanded to accommodate this development. There are no trees on this site that would be removed. Any future lighting plans would need to achieve compliance with the, or city requirements will be required during the final development plan process. All the roads would have to meet the fire department requirements. And here's an example of the ranch units that they're proposing. As I said, this is similar to what's at the Enclaves of Adelaide. They would have to meet our minimum design standards in chapter eleven seventy-one for natural materials, overhang, and the like, window trim, and the like. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan and preliminary subdivision plat with thirteen conditions each. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Leance, I was just wondering if you could give us a brief history of what the consent decree was about? I'm sorry, didn't want to put you on the spot.
Well, so the consent, I was here for that. It was a lawsuit between us and the developer originally, over, not even originally, after some changes to the development from the original, I believe. And the consent decree was entered into by the developer and the city to settle that case, and has terms within it. I think we shared that with the planning commission before. I couldn't recite all the terms for you here off the top of my head, but I haven't committed them to memory. But I think, the long and the short is that we, obviously, the development has started with a single-family home development, with Fisher Homes building out there, and seems to be, there were some difficulty in just installing infrastructure. It was just sort of, that was just sort of a physical difficulty and manpower and labor issue, I think, but the development seems to be going well, and the houses seem to be being taken up. From our perspective, this was ninety condominium units, and that's basically what we've got here. You could also view these as even a little bit more benign than that, in terms of attached single-family than the original thought. Regardless, it's, you know, six-one have those, the other from staff's perspective, it fits the development plan. It certainly is a unit type that, by the Enclaves of Adelaide, is proving useful and good and desired in our marketplace by the uptake of those units. And so, we would recommend approval of this. During some of the initial hearings, I recall, there aren't too many neighbors around there, but they would, I recall them expressing a desire for more of a single-family here, rather than a vertical condo or something like that. And so, that's what's got the right to do any of that, and that, it ends up being more like the single-family. So, I think we're getting closer to at least some of the comments that we heard during those initial discussions.
So, for the open space and parkland that you were mentioning earlier, is that going to become a city-owned park?
Yeah. That'd be city-owned, Commissioner, and given the, obviously, this goes back a long way. So, the way that the code read at that time, and the way that the plans were approved, was that that would be a city-owned park. We used to do that with most of our developments. And so, it's kind of fairly recently where it's more HOA, HOA-owned and maintained. This is a mixed-use development, going everywhere from industrial to, it was senior housing, but single-family, and then some condominiums and some duplexes. That thirteen acres was parkland, and it's placed in that location because there is some proximity to our closed municipal landfill across the tracks. And so, that keeps that as open space. There's nothing particularly wrong with that, but it keeps it as open space and not have houses within a radius of that landfill. That was the reason for the placement of it. The reason for the city-owned is that that's what we require time, and that's what the plan required.
So, for these eighty-seven internally to this subarea, is there any connection to the, like a walking connection that'll be made across Rockdale into it? Is there?
So, there'll be sidewalks across the whole subdivision on the public streets, and there's a, there's a point, and you can't really see it here, but there's a point right in there, I don't know if Leance can, yeah, right in there, which is very close to these condos. That's one of the main entry into the parkland, and then there's a smaller one to the north of it. So, there will be pedestrian access via the sidewalk network into the park.
Okay. Then, for just this subarea, not including the parkland area, is there open green space for walking, let's say to the retention area type of thing? I'm just thinking of dog walkers, you know, that type of thing. Is it just?
Well, I think it's certainly, there's common, there's lots, but there'll be uncommon maintenance.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's common maintenance.
So, in this case, and going back to the approved preliminary plan, the answer, I mean, you could go out there and walk your dog around the pond. I don't think there's any, nothing stopping you from doing that.
But no path along there?
There wouldn't be a formal law.
That's what I heard.
The parkland was to serve as that recreational purpose.
What did you say the setbacks lines were for the build?
Eighteen to twenty-five feet, depending on the location. Along the public street, there are twenty-five-foot setbacks. Within the public street, how they have it laid out, some of them are eighteen, most of them are twenty to twenty-five feet, just depending on their, how they align and configure the buildings on the site.
Again, that's not inconsistent with Enclaves of Adelaide, just for a real-world example.
Well, because there's no parking is my concern. So, you've got a two-car garage, ninety percent of people don't use the garage to put cars in it. So, you've got two cars parked in your driveway, you have customers, you have friends over, or you have a card party, and where do they park? So, I just think that houses need to be moved back if we're not going to allow parking on the streets.
Well, and there were extra, some extra parking spaces, just like Enclave, sprinkled throughout the development for that purpose. What we're seeing in terms of the market is really moved down empty nester in Adelaide. We would anticipate that here, and so, I suppose you could certainly have parties, but in terms of kids and cars and that sort of thing, just not seeing that in the market. So, we're, I mean, that's a lot of parking per unit, when you add it up here, especially for the size of the unit and the type of the unit. We're comfortable with that as staff, and we understand the restriction on parking along the street relative to fire department needs and that sort of stuff.
The no parking, though, is also, the no parking is also on Rockdale?
No.
Okay.
Not on the public.
It's on the private streets.
On the private. The private streets are narrow.
Any other questions for staff? I'll invite the applicant to come forward to the microphone. If you could just state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. I'm Ron Sabatino, and my company is the developer of this development, which is substantially identical to the enclave at Adelaide off of Halk Road. I will say that that particular subdivision has absorbed a year and a half faster than projected. It is almost unanimously empty nesters. I don't have any, anyone other than grandkids that come over and visit now and then. The residents of the community, which I visit often, because we are building homes there also, over off Halk Road, everybody seems happy with the space. It's tight and condensed. We're in a process after we, I think Ryan Holmes has a couple more lots to sell, and then we intend to turn it over to the homeowners association, and we've invited them to feel free to use the meeting room and the clubhouse just down the street for their regular homeowners So, this is Enclave Two, or, again, I think we call it Enclave Two. I would like to make one correction to staff's report. Staff does a very good job. I encourage everybody to support staff rather than argue with them, but I do have an argument with them. We have eighty-seven dwellings, and one of them is not an attached dwelling. So, it's eighty-seven attached and detached dwellings on the site. George, if you'd like, I could, you'd ask staff about the consent decree. If you'd like, I can give you more description of that. If not, I could tell you later about it.
Happy to meet with you later and talk about it.
Any questions?
From two thousand six to two thousand nineteen, has this come before the commission at all? From 2006 to 2019, has this come before the commission at all in between from those 13 years?
Oh, yeah, for the single-family portion, that's undergoing construction right now, development, yeah. So, I don't remember exactly when that was, but a few years ago.
Generally, like, how much faster do you think the rest of the, the sub-areas can be built out? Because we're talking 13 years.
Yeah.
My concern is always the green space and you've probably heard that on other comments type of thing as well. Because there's no green space here and there's one that's going to be dedicated to a city park. If we're looking at another 13 years prior to, you know, that being developed or the other areas being developed, I mean, that would be a real concern.
Let me respond to your question. Mr. Weber and Engineering Department is where I think staff is as well. We've already have filed for final development plan and final engineering for the balance of the 87 single-family lots, which we expect to be in front of you for that in December or January.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioner, I believe the parkland was part of the first phase. We may need to complete some, you know, deed transfer or something like that, but it's on the plat so that it would be up to the city, ultimately, the city council to go ahead and program the parkland. It does make some sense to finish out the subdivision in the roadway maybe and.
Yeah. I don't think it was technically platted yet, nor is it platted with here. I believe it gets platted with what we're going, what you're going to rule on next month. Because it's behind and adjacent to those lots.
Yeah, I know. We can double check.
Yeah.
Is there another access to those, other than the curved road access to those 87 single-family in the back?
Yeah, Rockdale goes down Randall, Rockdale goes down Randall and then comes out to the existing North Road, Armstrong Road, Curve, Randall intersection. So, yes.
Okay, that's come off on.
Yeah, there's two ways.
Two ways.
I would just add, just the one comment I have, you know, for the construction, whatever the construction is going forward, is I've noticed that, I've actually seen it twice where the dump trucks have hit the bridge over top of Curved Road. Whether it's your development or somebody else's in that area, I don't know type of thing. But if you, if you can let all the construction know to be careful on Curved Road because that's an arched-type overpass and they have to split the road in half, else, like I said, I've seen two dump trucks take off, stop in the middle of the road after they've hit the overpass or the underpass in this case. If there's any way you can do that, you know, just.
Thank you. Maybe somebody in the city knows who they are and if they're any of our people, we can address them with them.
Yeah, I'd say it could be anybody on the area.
Who's the builder on this going to be?
The builder on these lots is intended to be Ryan Holmes and ourselves. The builders on the single-family, we can talk about when we come next month.
Are you pleased with what Fisher's doing so far?
Generally, yes. I mean, I'm, you know, many of these builders are under pressure because of such a shortage of housing, not just in our city here in Delaware, but all over central Ohio. And, you know, they've knocked down a light pole, they've knocked down some signs, or the contractors have. So, that's frustrating and, but for the most part, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public here this evening who wish to comment on this particular case? Seeing none, I'll bring him back to the commission. What's the wish of the commission?
I'll move to approve 2019-2344 with staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger.
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yeah.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Good.
Oh, that's right, sorry. I'm ahead of the game.
Move to approve 2019-2345 with staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yeah.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Now, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck. All right. Could the clerk please read item C into the record? Oh, that's right. Do I have a motion for item C? Do you remove it from the table?
A motion to remove from the table 2019-1578 and 2019-1579.
Motion by Mr. Proll?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vonick?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yeah.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonick?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansoris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Now, we can leave it into the record.
Item C, Coglin's Crossing, case one, 2019-1578. A request by Delaware Development Plan LTD for a development text amendment to sub-areas two, five, and six of Coglin's Crossing on approximately 80 acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, north of Meeker Way, and south of Elliott Estates subdivision in zoned A1 PMU. Case two, 2019-1579. A request by Delaware Development Plan LTD for approval of an amended preliminary development plan to sub-areas two, five, and six of Coglin's Crossing on approximately 80 acres located east of US 23, west of Stratford Road, north of Meeker Way, and south of Elliott Estates subdivision in zoned A1 PMU.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I will walk you through briefly some of these updates. I know there were, there was a lot of information, I think, provided in your packet. We tried to be very complete this time in working with the applicant, including giving you all the past approvals, giving you some sightline studies. I believe the applicant has a, an updated 3D model to show you of this and a presentation as well, which I, I hope will help the visualization for this project. I think, I think the illustrations do that from our perspective. So, once again, we were talking about Coglin's Crossing, the 80-acre mixed-use development off 23 and Stratford. We did, city council did in 2016 rezone this property. Had a conditional use permit to allow the placement of the planned mixed-use overlay. Amended the comprehensive plan to allow for mixed-use designation and approved the preliminary development plan, preliminary subdivision plat. Subsequently, we, city council has approved the first final plans and plats, which essentially is for infrastructure only and that construction continues, as we all know, but it's nearing completion out there. The sub-areas, again, we've highlighted the ones in question in this case, being sub-area two, sub-area five, and a portion of sub-area six. So, here's the revised preliminary plan. Once again, we've worked with the applicant. One of the comments last time was, we were just looking at the sub-areas without being in the context of the overall development plan. As it sits today, this exhibit revises that to show you the full context of that plan and how the internal road network might connect in addition to the sub-areas in the middle of, of the site here. So, you see, we'll walk you through these sub-areas now. So, here, we've taken that plan, we've drawn in the sub-areas for you. Sub-areas one, three, and four are not up for discussion this evening. They remain as, as that plan until such time as they may or may not come forward for a change. But that's the plan that you see. Sub-area two, of course, remains with the units that we'll talk about here. Five has a change basically for where the detention basin is going to go. And sub-area six is really the lot along Hawthorne. It was, it's still the same, sub-area, see the car wash up there. And then, the rest of the sub-area didn't have a detailed preliminary plan and so, that, that building is what's in for detailed preliminary plan. So, let's just spend a very little time on sub-area five, which is the same as you saw in August. Nothing has changed from that. We didn't hear really any comments with respect to changing that. It seemed like it was fairly well-received and we went over those details then. Happy to answer questions about it, but in the interest of time, I'll move along. Sub-area six, I've put a blue dot over really what, it's not the whole sub-area, it's that area that we're talking about with respect to these cases. Again, nothing's changed from the August meeting with respect to this sub-area proposed changes. There are a few text amendments with respect to just adjusting setbacks and that sort of thing and that's included in your packet. No change from August. Again, no changes to the, what we consider to be a staff high-quality building design for these commercial outlots. This is sub-area six. We're only at preliminary here, so, you know, these are really in advance of what they'd have to do, but it shows you the level of quality. And then, some 3D renderings, there were more keyed to a photo site diagram for you in your packet. Hopefully, that helped you orient yourself a little bit. So, the thing everybody wants to talk about, and I think where we spent most of our time, because that's what we spent most of our time in August talking about, is sub-area two. In our judgment, there have been a number, we've, we've spent a couple of months going back with the applicant and really working through some of the issues that we heard. There may be fundamental disagreement on unit type, you know, overall unit type and that sort of thing. We don't think so. We think it fits the basic plan. But in terms of the substantive changes from the August plan or things we've looked at and made a conclusion on to maintain, would be that the Boulevard entry was reintroduced. It wasn't in that August plan, it's in the, it's in the current plan and that was one of the things we heard from really members of the community and planning commission. Get that Boulevard entry reintroduced off Stratford Road and make it feel more, you know, residential and also be a traffic calming element back into that portion of the site. So, that's been reintroduced. There's been some traffic calming improvements introduced along the Boulevard. The configurations changed from the original preliminary plan, but basically, the Boulevard starts with a Boulevard entry, next down with some parking adjacent to it, will go into a section where it crosses essentially the Stratford Commons Park and goes into that next sub-area, which then goes back into a Boulevard section. These are all traffic calming improvements. You can have the connection and obviously, you could, you could make the drive across that. But as we know from a lot of traffic calming discussions we've been having throughout the community, these kinds of improvements will slow traffic and it won't be a, air quotes, "cut-through" in this case. It's another way to make access to, to the balance of the site. The private engineers and our city engineers, and we spent a lot of time talking about traffic and access, maybe the bulk of our time talking about that in our business. They have gone back and they have relooked at that and the study, including perhaps limiting the access here, changing the access for this sub-area and they've concluded that this is, regardless of the unit types and regardless of the plan, this is the best access plan available. And Matt Weber can speak to that now if he likes or.
The will of the commission.
The will of the commission. So, there was some information with respect to that. The private study was in there and there's a memo from Matt in there with respect to the city's position. So, we can answer any questions. But long and the short of it is that we did do exactly what we said we were going to do and we reexamined all of that, as did the applicant. This turns out to be the best access plan overall, taking into account all the, all that we've heard. The overall number of units has been reduced from August by 16 and that's been reduced all along Stratford Road to reduce that in that specific area as well. The building size, the effect of that is also reducing the building sizes and the building sizes along Stratford Road have reduced by about 30 feet a building in total to the current plan. You gain about 100 linear feet across this whole frontage of open, more open area between buildings. Again, you're going from 24 buildings in the current plan to four buildings in this plan. There are different kinds of buildings and they both have good, high-quality and good articulation to them, which really breaks up that mass and that front of those buildings. But that had the net effect of making those buildings smaller, which was one of the issues that we had heard before. This really allows the maintenance of the layered buffering approach. And we've talked about this from the beginning, to have Stratford Road, to have an area between that and the bike path and then the open space with some trees in the, in the stormwater conveyance and then this part of the development, which would form some of the buffer back to the sub-areas to the west and as you kind of go up the hill to US 23. This maintains that approach in a two, in a two-story approach. It is different from this plan. That's why we're here. We reversed the clubhouse and the pool so that the clubhouse really fronts Stratford now rather than the pool kind of active and the loud, potentially loud pool. That's more internal to the site now and the clubhouse now helps to form that smaller, more in-scale frontage along Stratford, in our opinion. We did verify the size and updated the Stratford Commons Park. Currently, there's a driveway that bisects the park on the north side of the park, the current plan. That's removed. There's plenty of access around this site, as you'll see and we'll, we'll go through it again. But that moves the open space up from about 1.45 acres today to about 1.65 acres. And it also makes it, it's not bisected by a driveway, by an access drive. So, it's, it's more complete parkland there, but that was a question that came up before too. Maintain the high-quality building design with an extremely articulated front. That means it, it moves in and out this way, essentially. You can think of it that way. That breaks up the mass of a building. If you could think of just a flat front of a building of equal size, a flat front versus an articulated front breaks up the mass of that building and the scale of that building. Helps to break, break that down. That is maintained. They've added and enhanced some landscaping around the, the building perimeters, particularly along Stratford Road and particularly along the corners, which helps give that added layer to the buffering. And applicant has produced a number of those cross-sections that I mentioned. So, here's the revised plan. The buildings are smaller. The clubhouse is flipped. I hate this big dot. It's kind of hard to be specific. But the buildings are smaller. There's more room on the sides of the buildings for landscaping, but also opening up some of the area and also helping to break down the mass of those buildings. The Boulevard entry has been reintroduced. And this is about the area where there is on the plan today, an access drive into the back of what has been planned to be a big box, but now it can really be a complete parkland area with the removal of that. That was a plan. It was in your packet. I just wanted to put this section illustration up. The applicant may have that as well and in 3D, it may, it may, you may visualize it even better. But this kind of shows you from the edge, kind of the eastern edge of Stratford Road on the right side of the screen, back through the first row of the two-story units. So, this shows you the width of Stratford Road, the width then of the space between the bike path, which is, which has been constructed out there at this point. Still probably needs plants. I haven't been out there, but probably needs trees. But the width of that shows you that the width of this buffer, there were some questions last time about the width of that buffer. Width of that buffer is maintained to the current plan today, the same width, that will be planted. Obviously, these trees are shown at some maturity. These are not planted. And then, back into the two-story with the high-pitched roof lines and cupolas proposed for these buildings. Doesn't show you then the next layer and the next layer, just trying to show you this cross-section. You also have a car and a pedestrian to kind of get a sense of the scale. Kept these in because the materials, the roof lines, the cupolas, the articulation of the buildings, all that, none of that has changed. So, I think that it was high-quality before as staff. We judge that as high-quality and fitting with the design guidelines required by this text. That's all maintained and I believe the applicant maybe has a, has an even more updated drawing than that. The three-story units behind that maintain exactly as you saw in August with the high-quality architecture and materials. This is one of the carriage units with the garage and there's 10, 10 small units sprinkled throughout the site above these garages. This is the clubhouse. Again, no changes to that other than flipping where it is on the site. With that, I'm going to stop and just answer any questions you may have. But I think it may be instructive for you to allow the applicant to make their presentation as well, just from a visualization standpoint and I'm sure obviously by the people that are here, there's going to be some comment from the public as well. As staff, we do recommend approval of this, we think a number of the items that have been brought up since August have been addressed, and maybe not to everybody's satisfaction, I guess we'll find out through the process here, but as far as staff goes, we would recommend approval of this. These are needed unit types within our community. This is a high-quality development with a, with Romanelli and Hughes, a super-high-quality builder, I will tell you, and just talking to my building inspectors who inspect everybody's construction means and methods, they have nothing but the highest regard for Romanelli and Hughes in their construction practice. So we, we're blessed in that we have good applicant, good plan, good builder here, from my perspective. And maybe there's still some things we gotta, we gotta talk about, but overall, we're satisfied that we've addressed a lot of these concerns that have come forward. So we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff before we call the applicant up? All right. I'd invite the applicant to come to the, to the podium and just state your names and addresses for the record if you wish to speak.
Hello? Connie Kleemo, U Box 991, Pitasco, Ohio.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we, we also have our economic development director, Sean Hughes, is sitting in the, wave Sean, they may not know who you are. And he's here because we spent a lot of time talking about workforce housing, diversity of housing needs and that sort of thing, and obviously this site and a mixed use, so he can answer, I know he's an advocate of this project, he agrees with the recommendation of approval, and he's here to answer any questions from that perspective that you may have. Sorry, I forgot that, so sorry.
I'm glad to ask you. I, I won't reiterate everything that Dave's gone through, we, we have met, our engineers, architects, we've all met numerous times. As I hope you know, it's always been a goal to not only make this an establishment that cities have had you with, but also one that's successful. And as I said last time, what we found most often when we were going out and trying to make this a true mixed-use part of the city, a city doesn't thrive without residents. And so, in bringing in and actually landing, I'll say, Romanelli and Hughes, I was so very excited because of the quality, knowing that they could do the residential element of this development, and if approved, it would start building the base for the walkable areas for the actual living there and going to restaurants, shops, all that. We heard when we were here last, concerns about traffic that had been studied prior. I'm sure Mr. Weber can respond to any of those, I'm definitely not the person to do that. But what we have done is created our most updated walkthrough specifically for the Stratford roadside, since that's the portion that we've been discussing. And this particular video actually begins at the Meeker Way to Coglin Drive and goes east on Meeker to Stratford, and then goes up Stratford as we did before. So this is looking north on Coglin, and we are now on Meeker. And if you start heading east, you'll see that the retaining pond that's on the east side of Coglin continues and then the buffering. So along Meeker, we have a lot of green space and stormwater areas in their development space there. We then have the bike trail that comes down to Meeker, and you turn and you start heading north on Stratford. We have the bike trail as we did before, we'll have the greenery and the storm areas that's on the other side of the bike trail. No parking, no access through that particular area as before. You start to getting closer now to the area that, for the development, you see the clubhouse on the left, and you'll start, then you'll begin seeing the units that are now designed for along Stratford. There are the two-story units, and as you, as you pass through, you'll see there are actually areas that you can visually see through the buildings for walkways, and then the vision of the buildings themselves and the clubhouses. So you see that you're looking through. You also see, vision-wise, that it is succeeding and making an actual, natural buffer, which was always the intention there for the two-story area. We get up here to the only access off Stratford Road into this portion of the development, which is the boulevard, and we're now acting like we're from England and heading down the left side below, but that's how it goes again. But anyway, we, we end up coming into the boulevard, coming back, and as we did before, when you get through the residential portion, you'll be able to turn, and this video does much better than before, when I tried to say it was about football fields deep. You start understanding the green space that is there with the James Barn at the end, is quite large, quite deep, quite usable, good place for, for everyone to be getting together and playing and picnicking and doing things. So now you have an idea of the site, both visually from the Romanelli Hughes area and this particular park. We're going to stop here and sort of head up so you can look down and have a better view as you look east. That's all I have to say.
That's it? It's all you?
So with the two-story long Stratford, what's the, what's the building height now?
Building height on those are, are within code, yes.
Thirty?
And if you get back to the others, if you see the very steep roof pitches on the, on these, that's the majority of, of the problem with the height.
Yeah.
From our perspective, Commissioner, it'd be thirty-five to the top eve of the roof.
Yeah.
So the, the two, the two stories of living, there's almost a, almost a story of roof in there, which you need when you do a high-pitched roof.
And that leaves the three stories internal.
Yes.
Subarea five, is that still just thinking commercial retail, not a flat, not flats or anything like that in there?
No, residential there. Still keeping, keeping all the mixed use also in the interior that we said we're not distributing tonight. The intention here is to keep the mixed use, but having people that are mixing and using it. And, and the internal areas, whether or not a big box comes in the future or not, probably not, we want to be able to have those be restaurants, offices, walkable areas.
So four buildings along Stratford, how many, four, eight, how many houses must have come here?
I'll let Mr. Oliver speak to that.
Thanks.
Hi, Jim Olden with Romanelli and Hughes, 148 West Rock Road in Westerville. So your question is, in terms of the, the buildings themselves, they went from, in the previous plan, they went from sixteen units down to twelve units. So there'll be two-bedroom units on the side and a s, one single unit in the center on each floor.
So they went from, I also think you're asking how, how many units along Stratford? So they went from, it's twenty-four in the plan today, they went sixty-four in August, and forty-eight now. So all the units that came out overall came out from the, that side.
Thank you.
Any questions, or did that beautiful visual answer them all for you?
No, that, that helped me, calming, well, actually the traffic calming measures is, is what, that I was looking for, yeah.
So, the traffic calming is basically internal, not on Stratford Road?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Matt?
Yeah, Stratford Road is arterial, we wouldn't be able to do any traffic calming on, on Stratford Road. Speed was reduced when the property was annexed from forty-five to thirty-five. The walking path, I can attest to, I drive the stretch road about four times a day, for me, has created a little bit of a calming effect. We see, I see people on already frequently. When we, when the developer initiates the improvements to Stratford Road, the, the improvements to Stratford Road and the tighter lanes and new striping will also have more of an urbanized calming effect as well, in my opinion. But no, we can't do any kind of true traffic calming on an arterial road.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, when you said, when you told us there's traffic calming devices, it's, it's, it's internal is what they're going to be able to do.
Correct.
But the ones on Stratford Road, with the increase in traffic.
Correct.
Were limited.
Right.
As to what we can do, okay? And, and that's what concerned me in the original, no matter how you look at the numbers, okay? My concern was always the, the, the going into this complex off Stratford Road. And I, I know only time will prove who's right. I believe most of the traffic is going to come down Stratford Road, because that's the shortest distance, because I believe the majority, and this is just my belief, the majority of these people are going to be people who are working in the southern end of Delaware County more than the northern end, all right? So that traffic's going to come up twenty-three, and it's going to just normally want to go down Stratford Road. That's my concern, okay? Because I think that later on, this is going to come back to city council about all this traffic on Stratford Road. Hall Road, the road that comes out of, the one we just did comes into this unit up on, I've already heard a lot of rumbling from the neighbors up there, it's going to become a big cut-through, okay?
Right.
Which you can't help, and I understand that, okay? I'd like to have the cutoff Hough Road between my house, so I wouldn't have any traffic, but it ain't going to happen, nor can I expect it to happen. So I think, you know, that's always my concern, that we take this country road down here, which is what Stratford Road is, and it just automatically becomes a main thoroughfare. It just does.
If I may, try to address, in a couple minutes, some of your concerns, I, I can give it a shot. The mindset that we took in, in approving this access management plan, I, I don't want to sit and just reread my memo, I don't think that's going to be productive for anybody. The memos pretty clearly states our stance, we don't support closing off this access point for a, a number of reasons. But we thought it was, the, the four access points to this development, I guess the best way to sum it up is, they're not going to all see equal traffic, but they're all equally important. And I think that's a very, very fundamental piece of how we looked at this whole access management plan. The trips that you were referring to, you're exactly right, there's going to be a lot of people working in Columbus, so when they come home from work, we want them coming up, taking a right at Turkey Hill, coming up Stratford and taking a left into the back of the subdivision. That avoids, right now, Meeker seems very meek, no pun intended, very, very lightly traveled, but that's going to be a whole different situation when this development's built out. Meeker's going to be congested. So anything we can do now, and in the planning stages, to offset the congestion on Meeker, our biggest concern, if we, we were asked to take the style of the plan, we'd be kicking and screaming, but we would say we're going to need some sort of a roundabout plan at Meeker and Stratford, and there's just simply no space for it now. We've already built infrastructure, the, the access management plan's already mostly built. Secondly, then we're going to put more pressure on the Meeker private drive intersection, and I wish I had a pointer, but that doesn't warrant a signal, but it would be very close to warranting a signal if, again, that fourth vitally important component of this access management plan was eliminated. So add to that, you know, these are going to be our future city residents. You know, our mindset is, we feel that they deserve a, a way to get to our downtown and not have to get on twenty-three. So they should be able to use an arterial roadway that's in the city. Go down Stratford, go down on Tangi, and make it to our downtown and visit our downtown. So those are all kind of, you know, the vision we had for this plan. And we feel like taking out the, the access point would be like taking the fourth wheel off of a vehicle, it really is that important.
And the, the only other thing I'd add to that is just beyond the technicalities of, of the traffic studies, consider for a minute, we're, we're not relitigating necessarily the basic zoning that's in place on this property, we're changing some of it, and that's what's before you tonight, but the traffic study indicates that, that really regardless of the site plan that you see, or the existing site plan, this is where the access point was to be. And it, going back and relooking at it and accounting for the elimination of commercial in 2B and, and the addition of some dwelling units in 2B and a few in 2A, the traffic study shows that it's, it's a net wash. And this, this is where the, I mean, this is where the access point is today and is proposed to be with this plan, I guess was my only point with respect to that. And like you say, Commissioner Halter, with the, we're seeing, we have a car wash out there right now that's constructing it, that's it. So it's kind of hard to visualize the completion of the development and the traffic pattern, let alone the growth of the area around it using twenty-three and Meeker and maybe Stratford as well. But that, that occurs regardless of whether this development moves forward or not, that background traffic.
I appreciate it, because now you've given me a better view in a larger area, and that's what I was trying to figure out. In the larger area, why? Well, now I see it. It, it's not only the movement in there, but it's movement into the town without running down twenty-three, because there isn't really a good connection from here to twenty-three, so it, it makes a lot more sense to me, what you're saying, okay? I just hope that, that eventually, we never have to widen it, because there isn't any place to widen it.
Well, the developer is required to widen Stratford for, for a turn lane.
For turn lane, yes, yeah, okay.
I hope we never see the volumes for a four-lane Stratford, that'd be as well.
If they're all going downtown, I hope you see it, but regardless, you, you showed a plan that, that expands beyond this, and that's what I appreciate. You're looking down the road quite a bit and saying, okay.
Right.
So now I, I have much more, better feeling about what you're doing.
Fantastic.
You're smarter than I am.
My head's getting bigger, stop.
Not harder, you're much smarter than me, I know nothing about highways and roads.
I'm sorry, I feel bad because I, I see Sean sitting in the back of the room, I don't know if you had some comments prepared, if you want to share or not, or if there's just any questions for? Sean's not usually our planning commissioner, he's occupied a evening of his and his family, so I just, I feel kind of bad. I just want to, have you have the benefit of his input as well, I guess.
Yeah, if I may, good evening, commissioners, thank you for having me this evening, and it's unusual I'm here, but if you ever need me here, just ask. One of the things I'd like to point out about a, a project like this, this is really just the trend that business parks are moving towards, not just residential. I, I can point out a project that happened someplace else in the state where a community developed a technology park, but they didn't put any retail or housing in it, and it failed horribly. This gives us the opportunity to put more white-collar jobs in, in the city so that they're not having to go all the way down to Columbus, quite honestly. I think you probably saw a recent statistic that came out of the last city council meeting from our regional economic development organization, they said, we have, we've had a thirty-one percent job increase in the city of Delaware since 2010. That's significant, that's one of the highest percentages of job increases in the state, and we should be very proud of that. But our work is not done as, as our residential, as our population continues to grow, we need to continue to provide jobs for them, and we all know that the demographics have shifted dramatically. And in fact, my leadership has given me the, the charge to, to really concentrate very heavily on white-collar jobs. I need developments like this to do that. That the office component of this is incredibly important to me, and allowing an, an area where somebody can not only work, but they can, going back to what I said before about the technology park that failed, a place where somebody can actually literally live right there, walk out their back door, or their front door, take a bike or walk, ride across to an office and work, or, you know, walk over and get a beer or pizza, or, or, you know, maybe, I don't know, probably not a movie theater, but, you know, catch a, catch some entertainment, a band or something. That's something that, that we only right now have downtown. Well, not everybody wants to live in an older Well, not everybody wants to live in an older downtown apartment, right? Some people want more of kind of the urban, suburban feel, but still have that convenience that the downtown offers. This gives them that alternative and gives us the diversity in housing and office that, that we really do need as a city. Because right now, um, we have apartments and offices being filled as soon as we can renovate them downtown. But again, that's not, that's not floating everybody's boat. Some people want a higher quality office than, than an older brick style with, with brick walls and whatnot inside. Somebody wanted, some people wanted a nicer apartment. So, um, this gives that alternative, um, to do that. And hopefully, we can again, stop some of that traffic flow from some of that matriculation of traffic down to, to Columbus and whatnot and back.
Thanks, Sean, sorry we're watching ourselves there on YouTube, that's a little weird.
That was kinda neat.
It's a little disconcerting, I just wanted to get the site plan back on there. Hi YouTube.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions for, uh, the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a sign-in sheet or? Okay, hopefully everybody who wanted to speak this evening, evening signed in on the sign-in sheet earlier. Uh, if not, I'm sure we'll have some time at the end. But I'm basically gonna call people forward, based on your, the order that you signed in. Looks like Kathy Plummer? Roger's gonna speak, okay. Roger, if you could just come forward to the microphone and just, uh, state your name and address aloud for the record.
Roger Plummer, twenty-five oh five Stratford Road. I'd like to start out just, some questions and, and voice some concerns I have about, I guess, some of the changes here. If I may, could I, I, could I ask you the elevation of this to be put up?
The building elevation?
Yeah, did we have one of those that just showed?
We did, that was better than three D, but, yeah, we have the older, like that?
Yeah, that, that works.
That work?
Okay. When this started a number of years ago, and many of the residents on Stratford Road were working with Connie, Ms. Kleema, it was a great relationship and still is. I mean, we did a lot of work together, we figured out some things that could be done here, made some changes one way or another. Talked about pocket neighborhoods, came up with a lot of ideas. And we, and we landed on these houses along Stratford Road that, um, I think there was gonna be twenty-four of them, that, at that point in time, all worked. Now, since then, it seems like it isn't gonna work and we've gone to a bit higher density. And one of my questions is, when we see this stuff on Stratford Road, is it condominiums that are gonna be there, or are they apartments? I wasn't clear on that.
The proposal for apartment units, but the current plan, just to be clear, no matter how you build the unit type, they were attached and detached.
Right.
Two-story, kinda townhome-esque, those could be owner occupied, those could be rented, this, this could be in any of those conditions, from our perspective. I mean, these could be condominiumized from our perspective, so, but the proposal's rental units.
All right. And, did the density change from, I know the density changed here on Stratford Road, but the total density of what was facing Stratford Road and then what was behind it, did, did that change? Did that go up?
So that's a little harder to calculate because we're operating off preliminary plan with the text. So as staff, one of the things we did, and this was brought up in August, so one of the things we did is we went back and we sharpened our pencil to try to calculate that out for you, and that's, um, captured within our staff report. And the applicant may have a different answer for themselves, but from, from our perspective, um, I'll try to find my notes very quickly, I'm sorry. The number of units between, along Stratford and behind it would go up a little bit. Again, depending how you calculate, because you have to make some assumptions on unit sizes and that sort of thing. But we believe under the current plan, there'd be the twenty-four along Stratford and up to a hundred and twenty-five in 2B, so about a hun, a little less than a hundred and fifty, all told, they're at a hundred and seventy-four. So in, in our judgment, they're, they're pretty close to that total. They, they have thirty-five feet of height they could go. It's conceivable they could do a design that meets the design requirements of thirty-five feet and maybe add a third story to that row behind. That's sort of conceivable and, and maybes, and if you did that, you'd be up in the, you know, the hundred and seventy-some unit range. And that's why we landed on, we, we think it's reasonable to assume that there could be about a hundred and fifty units there, under the current plan today, to answer your question, right?
Well, so the reason I ask those questions is, and this kind of goes a bit to the traffic calming that we were talking about just a little bit ago. I mean, back into the nineties, twenty-plus years ago, we have addressed in front of planning at one time or another, development of this land. And different developers came in and it was always about apartments. It was always concerns about density and about traffic, and it always got voted down. And it's like, here we are again, we had houses there, kind of everybody agreed to it. It was sort of the best of both worlds of compromises for the developer and for Stratford. And then now we're back to apartments again. And to go to the traffic calming, we had like twenty-four units there on Stratford Road, and now we've increased that amount. And there, I can state for a fact, there is no calming on Stratford Road. It is out of control. Cars rip up and down our road. We have talked to the post office about putting our mailboxes on our side of the road so we wouldn't even have to cross the road, and that, that wasn't viable, that wasn't gonna happen from the post office. And there are times too, and I will sit there and wait for ten, fifteen cars or better to go by before I can get out of my driveway. And now we're gonna put a hundred and fifty, give or take, units over there that will come out on Stratford Road to get somewhere, and it's just gonna make a mess. So, I say all that to say, you know, we, we had this relationship with Ms. Kleema to those of us on Stratford Road to try to work this out. And I do know that Romanelli builds nice property, but there's got to be some way we can look at this and figure out how to get this back to some sort of residential thing on Stratford. And, you know, maybe it won't have, make the biggest dollars because it won't be the most units sold or whatnot, but I, I think in the end, it'll be better for Delaware all around. So, I just think we need a, I mean, personally, I gotta say, not all that wild about that. I mean, I, I think that would look nice in Dublin, but not here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ginger Williams? Ms. Williams, if you could just state your name and address for the record when you reach the microphone?
Ginger Williams, two-six-three-seven Stratford Road. I am a fourth generation, who was raised a fifth generation on Stratford Road since about eighteen seventy-eight. In the August meeting with Connie, she said that she could not find anybody to build twenty-four homes. And I told her, I could find somebody. And she became kind of animated, and she said, please send them to me, at the August meeting. All my neighbors were there. So I went home, made a phone call to a friend of mine, P and D Builders. And he said, right up my alley, I love that project. So I called Connie the next day, and she said, oh, that property is in contract with Romanelli and Hughes. So I talked to Jim with Romanelli and Hughes after that, and they do beautiful work. Uh, lost my spot here, sorry. He had told me that, 'cause I had told him that Connie said this, and, but anyway, he said that if they didn't get the hundred and ninety units, that they would have to pull out because they would have to lose park, parking lots. And now I do know Romanelli and Hughes is building a pocket community in Powell, is that right?
Yeah, I've done multiple communities.
Mm-hmm. And then, you know, they're saying that, you know, it's for millennials don't want to own. Well, I don't really, I'm just gonna skip that part. I'm not opposed to the change, I was the one in Stratford who was so excited for this project. I really was. But, you know, I was excited because we were gonna keep our historic district, you know, with, you know, the barn and the little mill workers' houses and across the street. But the traffic is just absolutely horrendous. Twenty-five cars to get out of your driveway. Nobody goes down 23 anymore. They pull off at Carriagertown, and I would like to, I think I should sit out there with a notepad and stop cars and ask them, where are you coming from, where are you going? They're not going on Stratford Road, they're bypassing all the traffic lights. The speed is terrible. You know, we're just asking you to stand with the original, you know, vote. Don't let developers dictate what happens to our historic village, um, in Stratford. And, you know, it was a good choice, the twenty-four homes was a good choice. And I hope you'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. Jean Ball? If you could just state your name and address when you reach the microphone for the record.
Hi, um, Jeannie Ball, nineteen eighty-nine Stratford Road. I wanna give you just a little different perspective. I don't live right across from this development. I am on Stratford Road, but I'm up a little ways. There's a curve in the road, and then I'm up across from, if you've ever seen the site plan, it's the James House and James Barn, it's a big house and a big barn. So I'm kind of away from it, there's a pond and a, and a nice walk over a stream and everything across from my house. So, but these are my friends, these are my neighbors. And, uh, just to give you a different perspective on Connie Kleema and the group, when they came into our area, they, um, for the historical society, they moved a bunch of dirt for free, planted a whole lot of trees and bushes for free along, along 23, as you can, if you drive by, you can see all those. They also, a project I had worked on for years is a little mill worker's house. And I think I gave everybody brochures about our tour of Stratford, which was very successful, and we'll probably do it every couple of years now, because so many people came along to see the Stratford area. It is a mill town, it's on the National Register. Connie gave us that house, the mill worker's house, that I was a docent in. So she's contributed a tremendous amount to the community already. And I want you to see that side also, that she's really been working with us and had many meetings with the neighbors and what have you. I asked her to not have this whole big long stream of condos that all you see is a, a wall of buildings. And she went back, you know, to the developer, I think Romanelli and Hughes is a wonderful developer, and I think they would do a beautiful job for us. And she divided the buildings, so I said, make it look like there's some big houses across the street from these little mill workers' houses, instead of a solid blast of apartments. So she has complied with almost everything that I have asked her to do. Again, I wanna say that I don't live right across from these buildings. I don't see quite as much traffic as they do, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more traffic when all these people come out and turn onto Stratford Road and then go to Columbus. 'Cause that's where they'll, that's where they'll go to get their, to the light. So, um, just so you have kind of a, a balanced viewpoint from both sides, I just wanted you to know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jean Sealy? What did she say?
She passed.
Pass, okay, we can do that. Uh, apologies if I butcher the pronunciation on this name, John Kofa-Czek?
Kowalski.
Kowalski, I wasn't even close. Mr. Kowalski, if you could just say your name and, uh, address for the record when you reach the microphone?
Yes, uh, John Kowalski. I reside at nineteen oh one Stratford, and I've been there since November of twenty sixteen. And of course, in that time, things have really taken off as far as the building. I am shocked at the traffic. It is crazy. Now, I don't know if you're aware of it, but within a mile, there's four car dealerships of that area. And I hear people getting out there and getting into their new Corvettes and Camaros and Chargers, and that's nice, but the, the traffic load is crazy. And, uh, I think everything I've heard tonight is really good about the, the plans for the development. Everything sounds really good, especially the green space, I like that. But, uh, I'm really concerned about how the volume of traffic is gonna be affected. And of course, right now, there's a little detour because they're working on 23. But there is, because all these folks have discovered Stratford Road is a nice detour, are gonna be coming down that road. And it is amazingly tough for me to get out of my driveway. And I, I never thought I would see that. When I moved in three years ago, it didn't seem that way. It seemed like a, uh, a nice road. So, uh, whatever happens, I hope there's some attention to the, uh, traffic flow and the speed. There is definitely a lot of speeders that like that road. I can understand, in my younger years, I used to do that too. But, uh, please pay attention to the traffic load and the speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Martin? If you could just state your name and address when you reach the microphone, thank you.
I'm Barbara Martin. I live at nineteen oh one Stratford Road, I've lived there for thirty years. And I've seen a lot of changes when I first moved in, we had horses that actually came down the road and would, it was, it was a much quieter road. But when the forty-two bypass went in, people got kind of confused and thought that they were coming to forty-two because they saw a left turn and they missed their turn, and they'd end up on Stratford Road some way. And they discovered there were no traffic lights on Stratford Road, and they could get up to Olin T and G Street and get into the city, and traffic started increasing. Well, then, of course, when Turkey Hill went in, people discovered, even more people discovered Stratford Road, and more people were using it. But now with all of the changes that are being made on Route twenty-three, people are using Stratford Road instead of 23, and they have discovered no stoplights. So I do think that one of the things that you need to do is work with the county, because I understand Stratford Road is a county road, not a city road where I live. I live in Delaware Township, but the road doesn't belong to the township, it belongs to the city, or not the city. Well, I don't know, half of it might be city and half of it county.
In and out, in and out of the city.
Yeah, when, when I, I lived, I, I've moved, when I first moved to Delaware, I lived in Stratford Town Apartments. Then I lived in River Oaks condominiums, and then I lived at nineteen oh one Strat- Then I lived in River Oaks condominiums and then I lived at nineteen oh-one Stratford Road. So I've just been inching down the road, but I've, I've stayed where I am for thirty years now in this house. So, um, the traffic has definitely increased and, like everyone says, just trying to get to my mailbox. I have to stand and wait for, I don't know how many cars at a time, at least six cars at a time. Whether they're coming from one direction or the other, there's traffic and you just can't safely get across the street. And so, um, because there are no traffic lights, I'm thinking there ought to be a traffic light added to Stratford Road. And then it won't be the great advantage that they've had in bypassing the traffic lights. Or a stop sign even, if you had to stop when you got to Hall Drive and look both ways. And when the car dealerships went in originally, there was an agreement, they would not test drive on Stratford Road. But that was, that was way back, that was when the Toyota dealership was there. And, and I think Chrysler dealership also had that. But now we've, we've got, you know, the church is gone and it's a car dealership. And that's right at the end of Hall Drive and they come down and, and they test drive in front of our house all the time. And speed limit, when you take that curve out, which you're going to do on Stratford Road, I think you're opening up the speed even more than you have before. Um, I know the curb people have accidents because they're going too fast. And you take the speed, the curve out and the speed, it's not gonna, it may stop the accidents because people were going too fast around the curve, but they're still gonna be going too fast on Stratford Road. So I'm asking, please figure out some way to slow down the traffic, cause it is going to increase. And I do think that Connie has worked really well with the neighbors. And I appreciate all the work that she's done. But, um, you know, I understand the wanting to have the, uh, single-family homes along there to make the neighborhood still look like a mill workers', um, community. Um, I, I don't know that you can do much about that right now, but. What, what I am concerned about most is the safety on that road. And, and my neighbors across the street have commented too, they're concerned because the, uh, car dealership on twenty-three and Hall Drive is talking about trying to make, take a, a house out of the estates there and coming from both directions, the traffic on one side and, and having the car dealership creep in from the other side is making our quiet community something other than a quiet community. I mean, we still are residents who've lived there. So, thank you, I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Uh, Ed Gifford? Mr. Gifford, if you could just state your name and address when you reach the microphone?
My name is Ed Gifford, uh, I live at one sixty-five Peach Drive, Delaware. I didn't intend to speak tonight, I was just signing up because I was supposed to.
Oh, you didn't have to speak if you didn't want to.
Well, you asked me, so.
We're recording now.
Yeah. Uh, no, I just wanted to say, uh, the, uh, the, I wouldn't call it a video, but the presentation that was made gives a whole different perspective of what it is and looking at single individual pictures, being able to see the different, uh, well, just totally different perceptions, looking here, looking here, looking there. And, and what, what that meant to me was, as I think about, do, uh, should there be approval of the higher roof with the cougles, et cetera? Uh, I live in Stratford Woods, uh, been there since two thousand and ten. And certainly as you exit on Hawthorne and you're waiting for traffic to stop, you're looking across the road. Used to look at the horse farm, et cetera. So now this is what will be there. That gave a very good picture of how it will look for those coming from Stratford Woods. And just to say that, uh, I think that type of a, a roof with the cougla complements, uh, the architecture and what you see from this perspective, uh, you know, from going down twenty-three, et cetera. And I think it really gives it the, uh, the rural appeal, the barn-like, if you would, appeal, you know, of Stratford and the area. Uh, a, as a residential community of our own, we're really not part of the, the, the discussion of tonight in terms of whether this should or should not be, it, it doesn't affect us directly. But I guess I'd, given the opportunity, I just wanted to express how it does affect us indirectly. It's simply aesthetic for us, okay? And for those coming down, uh, and up and down twenty-three, okay? But the impact is a positive one. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody who signed up on the list, was there anybody else who wanted to comment this evening? Okay. Um, with no more public comment, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to bring up in concern to your traffic problems, I've lived here since nineteen sixty-three. Delaware was thirteen thousand people, my family moved here. We've increased a little bit. And the traffic is bad everywhere. Central Avenue, Hop Road, Williams Street, Pennsylvania Avenue, Liberty Street, everywhere. Speeding is terrible. But as the old saying goes, you can't stop, you can't fix stupid. Alright, I was coming back today up seven forty-five or two fifty-seven. There were six or seven of us in a low road doing fifty-five miles an hour. Some guy came flying around, all six cars, at a little bit over eighty-five miles an hour, he had to be, and damn near wiped out three of us. Because all of a sudden he had to crash over because somebody inconveniently was coming down the other lane at him. Which is just totally unexpected. So I know what you're talking about with speed and stuff. But there's very limited, uh, uh, honestly, what we can, as a city can do. You can't put a policeman down there twenty-four hours a day, okay? So I know what you're talking about and it's a concern, but the concern is we're growing. Now, and I guess the concern was, many years ago, if we wouldn't have ever annexed any property, it would've been built outside the city and the traffic would still be there. You can't have both of them, you can't have prosperity. You know, and, and, and I, I used to say all the time, you know, if none of you or none of anybody else, including us, my family, had not have moved in since nineteen sixty and it wasn't a great place to live, we wouldn't have these problems. But it is, it's a phenomenal place to live, a great place to live. And because of that, we're going to have growth. There's no way. But this property has been talked about for, I know at least twenty, twenty-five years about them selling that piece of farm down there and turned it into something. And some of the earlier things were even worse than this. And I, Jeannie, you remember, cause they came down and tore down all the trees. Just so, when it, before it was in the city, so they wouldn't have to pay for the tree replacement. They didn't get away with it, but it was a nice try, okay? So this is a problem with development, you can't have it both ways. You know, and I'm, as I've expressed, I'm concerned about Stratford Road, but it's already bad. I don't know how much worse it's gonna get, but it's already bad. And as explained to me, you can't put up a stop sign just because you want to. And you can't have a traffic light just because you want to. There are some state codes that say, no. Alright, because we're giving you money. If you don't follow our codes, we're not gonna give you the money. If I'm wrong, please tell me, but I've been through this because I got into this argument before. So it's a problem. And, and, and I understand what you're saying, I just don't see a solution for it. We can't have it both ways. But I think that, I think all of us, at least listening to you people, it's a good project. There are just some problems that come with it. The only other problem, as I've always said, is buy the property yourselves and then you can do whatever you want to with it. Okay? But at this point, it would probably be a little bit expensive with all the money she's put into it. With, I've never seen anybody develop as much as you have for nothing there. Yeah, I'm sure you're a little concerned about it at times too.
Pretty well said at all, Jim.
That's all I wanted to bring up.
Pretty well said at all.
Well said.
Just wanted to take a moment and publicly commend staff and the developer. They took a lot of our August comments and they actually addressed it. And so from my perspective, and I think I'd speak for the other commission members, we appreciate that, it's not always the case. Um, and it sounds like you've gone above and beyond with the community and that is huge. I think this is a great example of looking at the old, right? The, the longevity of the community and the history of the community that's on the east side of Stratford and what's happening on the west side. And the, for the fact that you've gone above and beyond, it seems like, from what we've heard and definitely from my perspective, that's appreciated and staff putting in the legwork to making this, uh, palatable for us, cause it's a lot of information. We appreciate that.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. I'd like to make motion to approve twenty nineteen fifteen seventy-eight with all staff recommendations.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Badger, second by Mr. Holter.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Holter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansors?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
I'll move to approve twenty nineteen fifteen seventy-nine, again with all staff recommendations.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Badger, second by Mr. Holter.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Holter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Mr. Vonek?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansors?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Uh, first reading for this?
Uh, November eleventh, but public hearing will be on November twenty-fifth and I believe we're looking around eight o'clock.
Everybody hear that? Yeah, so they'll, council will read it technically Monday, but that sets the public hearing for the twenty-fifth at eight o'clock. So you don't need to be here, I mean, you're welcome to come to council if you don't have anything else to do, I guess, on Monday night, or you can come to twenty-fifth.
It's like a board.
I'm sorry. I'm assuming they might have other things to do.
Yeah, go ahead. You, you do have to step to the microphone.
One thing I forgot to mention. Uh, we have a lot of pedestrian, pedestrian traffic coming down Stratford Road now because of the apartments, of course. There's no sidewalks or whatever. Uh, and the gentleman mentioned two fifty-seven. I understand, I used to drive that for years when I worked at OSU. But that's country. We're talking about a neighborhood here where there's kids. And again, I think what, what they're doing here with the subdivision is great. But my concern again is the traffic flow. And you seem to resign the fact that we can't do anything. That's basically what you said. And I think that's wrong. How about dropping the speed limit? Something. And if somebody gets killed on that road, huh, you know, I've spoken my piece, but I'm concerned about a lot of innocent people, not just me and getting out of my driveway. So please.
We can talk to the police officers and have them sit there and try, usually just the, the vehicle there itself will start calming for a short time. They can't sit there twenty-four seven.
Oh, no. No, I wasn't saying.
They can do different devices, they can put, they can put the sign up, I'm talking to you, they'll put the sign up that reduces it, just be my, or you'll see what you're going, that works for a while.
And sir, excuse me, for the record, can you just state your name?
Oh, sure.
That we know when we're listening to it that you.
John Smith. Since he had a hard time with the name. John Kowalsik.
Okay, I gotcha.
Yeah.
I got it right the second time.
Yeah, okay. But I, I wanted to make sure that I brought it up about the pedestrians because there seems to be, I guess because of the convenience store down there, you know, that.
Could I?
And all those apartments.
Yes, he'd like to.
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, it's important to emphasize that a Stratford Road path is in our city's Parkway Master Plan. And in my opinion, I'd like to see it move up the priority list. Our, our Parks, um, Director would like it to as well. It is costly, cause it's a long path from Olin T and G all the way to here.
Go ahead.
But I, again, I, I live in the area too and I drive Stratford every day. And I would love to see that path.
Yeah.
Personally and professionally.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service also.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
We're done?
We're done.
We're done, we're done.
Well, you're done.
You're done.
We're done.
Could someone please grab the door so we can continue? Thank you, Lance. Alright. Next item on the list, Planning Directors Report.
Chairman, members of the commission, just wanted to send a few things around your way if you weren't part of this. And oft, we had a, we had a big October in Delaware between statues and First Fridays and, uh, I think most of you know, we were able to win a national award from American Planning Association for, uh, as a great neighborhood in America. Uh, for our downtown neighborhood and, uh, the, the mayor and, uh, the manager, Lee Yocum, joined me in, uh, Washington to, uh, pick up that award, but we'll be getting a bronze plaque suitable for mounting outside that looks like this reasonable facsimile. Hopefully in a few weeks. Uh, and then I, I hadn't seen some of you, so I just wanted to pass around what the, uh, the actual award would look like. Uh, it looked like when we picked it up in Washington and, uh, did a little advocacy on behalf of planning, but also, uh, while we had their ear on behalf of the city of Delaware for some projects as well, so. Uh, the mayor happened to have some remarks. And then we had a great, uh, I thought a really fun and a great local celebration over, uh, by the statue on the seventeenth, which was, uh, which was, uh, well attended. Uh, we're on YouTube, we're watching ourselves on YouTube again.
We have a new system.
Don't look stupid.
Well, it's far too late for me to not to look stupid, Bob, but, uh, so I just wanted to share that with you again and I, I think as a community, we, as a community, we deserve that award. It's, obviously it's from the, you know, our professional organization in planning, but uh, as I remarked at the local celebration, it really takes a lot of people, putting in a lot of time and a lot of effort through a lot of years, uh, to make that, to make it a great community and results in awards like this. So, uh, we should all leverage this as, as much as we possibly can. It certainly is something to leverage, there's only a hundred of these around the country. Which puts us in some, uh, pretty rare air, uh, with respect to, uh, our neighborhoods and an award like this. Testimony to what you all do every month as planning commission, uh, for this community, so we appreciate that.
But you need to put it in perspective, like nineteen thousand cities and, come on, get it.
Yeah, so, I, the stats are about nineteen thousand cities and villages in the United States. There's a hundred of them that have won this award, which puts us in about the top, uh, half of one percent of communities in America.
There you go.
Which is, we all know we deserve to be, but now others.
Which is why we're having traffic problems.
As we say with parking issues in downtown, these are high quality problems to have. So there are many communities that would love to have this kind of problems. But I just wanted to take another moment, share that with, cause I hadn't seen, seen all of you after our, after our crazy but wonderful October. That's all I had, I can't, I can't top that.
You really can't top that, that's, that's an exciting one. That's a very commendable award and there's a lot of effort that's going into, uh, receiving that award uh, from this body and other bodies and especially the staff and I think it's very commendable. I think everybody should be very proud. Uh, Commission Member Comments and Discussion? Start here, work your way around.
At last month's meeting, I mentioned that there, you know, the use of, off of Cheshire, there was an access road, you know, the emergency access road kind of thing and trucks and stuff were using it pretty much daily type of thing. Not just a few days afterwards, Pulte did put in the, uh, whatever they're called. So I just wanted to mention that. And if Matt could pass that along, I don't know who was here last month, I don't really remember kind of thing, but.
Jonathan?
Back at, uh, it could've been, I don't remember.
Carrie's been working hard.
Yeah, Carrie. Yeah, yeah, please help pass along, cause, you know, they mentioned that as well.
Well, that's right, Carrie, I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, um, not a few days afterwards, they'd actually did put those in, so.
Okay, great.
And that October speech you gave was wonderful. You should've had that on YouTube.
Blind squirrel finds a net every now and then. Appreciate it.
Got ready gifts.
Um, I, I just want to echo congratulations. It's, we know what a great, uh, department you have and what you've created. Now, you know, fortunately, the country gets to know that too, so congratulations.
Very nice, awesome, nice, appreciate it, that the staff makes the departments.
Yeah, but, uh, it was an awesome October around here, I tell you what, it just.
I don't know how we're gonna beat that up.
One great thing after another, and we kept saying, how is it, we're gonna top it, and it continued to get topped, so. It's, uh, it's wonderful. Great.
It's a great time to be mayor, that's all I got. Well, just kudos to everyone who worked so hard on that, so I know it took a lot, a lot of hours. And I appreciate it. So, I don't know if some of you know, but in my daytime job, I work at a title company. So I go to weekly meetings with realtors and other affiliates, you know, banks and title companies and all that. So today we had no tour, because we have such few houses on, for sale in this community. So I brought up the discussion about what do your clients want, what do your customers want? Do they want smaller lots, do they want smaller houses, do they want smaller apartments or condos? What are you hearing? So it turned into like an hour conversation. Um, only one person wanted apartments, and she is actually moving into the flats on Hopkrow. That's what she wants, she's a single lady, she used to live in DC, she said that'll be huge compared to what she lived in there. And she's gonna pay twelve hundred dollars a month, and she's totally thrilled with it, so, that's okay. Um, but it was interesting to see how many older people are moving, moving in. Yes, they want the smaller houses, but not necessarily smaller yards. And I said, so they're gonna take care of them, and they said, or their kids will. You know, the, the kids are saying, if you come back, I'll take care of your, your yard, Bob, don't worry about it. So it was just interesting. Um, they don't want to see them side by side, the density gets so small, because that just turned them off totally. So it was just, it was really interesting for me to listen to everybody. I said, I want to know that it's what our community wants, and not the developers cramming it down our throats, because they can obviously more, make more money. So I just, I don't know, I just had a good conversation today. And then I have a question for you, I think. Um, in driving through Olentangie Ravines on Sunday, looking at the, um, Fisher Homes, there is no OSB boards at all. So you, if you look, you can see inside the houses, most of them are sold, I think there was one available. You can see the two-by-fours, if they're really two-by-fours. And then there's this silver board, looks like insulation. So on the inside, you're gonna have your drywall, on the outside, you're gonna have your siding, and that's it. How sturdy can that silver board really be? I was told this morning that that's a type of a cardboard, and the silver thing on the outside, which I don't get. But it really wears, because I always thought Fisher built a beautiful home.
It used to be fiberglass with foil on it.
And it's, this is thin, and there's no USB.
It's about three quarters of an inch, it's about same thickness as you.
I'll get you the, the specifics of that subdivision.
That the USB board has.
Well, there are new wall systems, uh.
How sturdy can it be?
There are new wall systems, there's a thing called Zip Wall, there's, I don't know if this is that, Stacy's familiar with that, which actually, from my inspectors, you gotta meet the code.
I know.
They're meeting the code. Uh, but the, that sort of product could actually, from their perspective, be a better product than the traditional OSB with, uh, like a vapor barrier.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the white crinkly stuff you hear all the time. Uh, but you have to have, you gotta have a backer, you gotta have a vapor barrier, the houses are built pretty tight for energy efficiency code now. But there are different systems that are emerging in order to meet that code. And sometimes it's finding a material, sometimes it's ease of installation with the labor shortage issue on construction. Uh, the easier to install, um, and seal, in some ways, the better. So we see all kinds of different kinds of methods of performing, um, what you have to under the code. But I can get a specific answer with respect to ravines for you on what that material is, I don't know.
Right, and I've also, you know, I've seen the OSB board, and then they paint this black stuff on it, and I'm sure that's some kind of an insulation so that that board doesn't breathe too much.
Yeah, it could be.
So I haven't seen that so much, but now I'm seeing the silver stuff.
A water barrier as well.
And stucco homes, I don't even think they need vapor barriers anymore, do they?
Well, stucco or the stone, I know, it's, it's a different wall system in that you may build the base of the wall, right? But you have to allow for moisture to wet back behind that material, particularly with stucco, but also with like the stone or brick that you might see. Uh, keep it off the ground, and you'll see weep holes down there as well. Usually they'll have, a lot of times they'll have little plastic inserts in them too, to try to, because the moisture's gonna force its way through and also over the top. So you're just trying to get that moisture to just run down a barrier and then out, and not into the home. That's the point of that wall system.
And, and we also talked a lot about affordability, and affordability means different things to different people, obviously. But I did have a, um, a lender say that he just did this, not here, but someplace else, the manufactured homes. Not, not a bubble home, but a house is built someplace else, and they bring it in. Some modulars.
Some modulars.
I mean, have we given much thought to going after these companies? Because they can, they, he just did one thing for a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty thousand, which is really good compared to the two seventy that we're seeing in everything else.
Maybe from South or his.
No, 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 for somebody else.
Well, so maybe, but I, so manufacturer homes been around for a while.
Right, I understand that.
Um, and we used to have a, a, like, we have the parade of homes here in Cincinnati, we'd have a parade of homes, parade of apartments, parade of condos, but we'd have, we had a parade of manufactured homes as well, because people sometimes think there's a stigma around.
There is.
Those homes. Um, that I think is changing, and if people understood how their home that they think is stick-built, one stick at a time on site, much of it is manufactured wall systems and roof truss systems to try to be more efficient in the building process. And part, that, that should, that should scream at you, it, it could scream at you as developers making more money, but, I mean, they would not do that if it wasn't an efficiency and labor and material issue for them. Why, why would they? They'd just keep doing it the way they've always done it. Um, so that, that, that screams at you that they're getting much more efficient, even the roof trusses, if you'll look at those, the, the plates that hold up, the different pieces of the truss have to be nailed in a particular pattern. It's down to that level of stuff. So when you, when you look at my inspectors and the codebooks that they have to know, that's come a long way, and the codebooks are getting thicker and thicker of what they have to know, what they have to look for when they're out on job, even just meet minimum, uh, standards. But these things, labor and materials are by far the biggest driver. You know, it doesn't matter to me what anybody on that side says, in terms of the cost of any kind of construction home, or Dr. Green's office, or any of that. Uh, by far, the biggest. Regulation does play a role, that adds some costs. And we have our standards that you have to meet, which may be different than somebody else's standard. Um, but that's pretty minimal compared to the cost of labor and materials. Right now, we see it in our own city jobs, when we, uh, when we try to pave a road, or we try to, you know, rehab a second story of a building. So those are things that, and you're right, affordability, we've been talking a lot about this in the conference of plan, you're on the steering committee, and, and, and you all have been paying attention, so the co, it's a good focus group. It's one focus group, as you know, we've had lots of other input through that, we're doing a market study, we're also involved in the Morpsy Regional Housing Study, which is gonna help us understand the regional context within, within which we exist. Uh, and I still continue to believe there's, as you say, there's just housing of pretty much any type is in short supply now. Uh, a diversity of housing stock is, are, are the strongest communities as opposed to a monoculture of buildings. Uh, and we know, we know the communities that have that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that helps to house our workers at different levels of income, uh, and addresses somewhat affordability. But sometimes, we, we also have to think about, as, as we have standards, and maybe we raise those standards, that does impact the affordability scale to a certain degree.
Right.
And so finding that balance and, um, allowing for diversity of housing stock, and all the things we've been talking about with the steering committee, and particularly the southwest and southeast area, uh, and then maybe thinking about intensifying some of the development within areas that already has infrastructure, and maybe some, some areas need to be redeveloped while we also pay attention to neighborhoods that are there. Um, all lean to affordability and sustain, fiscal sustainability. So there is no magic answer that I have come across yet, there's lots of conversation throughout America and our community today about these issues. So we're, we're at a good moment with our conference plan, I think, to get all the input that we can, and make the best decision that we can for the city of Delaware moving forward. But I would continue to advocate that, y, y, your focus group may say that, oh, they don't want a smaller yard, but those houses are being bought at a phenomenal pace. I, I think, on place of all day, that, one of the things we've forgotten how to do, and I spoke at my national, my statewide conference about this, I've done it twice now, uh, with consultants and some people from Upper Arlington, my colleagues, because we're all in this issue, is that we've kind of forgotten how to approve as a community, and we've forgotten how to build as builders, what we would call that missing middle housing. We can build high-end housing all day long, we can even build low and moderate income housing that's probably subsidized. What we're missing is that stuff in the middle, and we have great, my part of the presentation is, we, the city of Delaware, every community has DNA for missing middle housing. We have it, we just drive by it, and we forget it's there, and we don't see it. And I have examples from Delaware where I have something, if I did a density calculation, there'd be a single-family home that's at four units to the acre, and right behind it, it'd be at eight units to the acre. Then there's a duplex that would actually be at about fifteen units to the acre. This is why I keep, I will keep telling you, density is not nearly, i- is not the issue we should make it out to be. Design, connection, fit, how a neighborhood fits together. But one of the things we've forgotten how to do is make a mixed neighborhood like that in a block phase. I mean, that's, those are just houses within a hundred feet of each other, in our community today. That will help address some affordability issues as well, over time. So we've got, as a, as a country, we've got to figure out how to approve and build that stuff again, and, and you guys full well know that we get bogged down in all sorts of discussions on any kind of units. Those are the kind of iss, I mean, they're real, they're big, and we're gonna have to localize them to Delaware. We, we could say we're just doing nothing but large lot, single-family development. And you will have a serious fiscal sustainability problem in this community.
But, but the problem you hear all the time, and I've been listening to it for quite a few years, okay, is it, well, look at the traffic.
Yeah.
And not in my backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah, we ought to have affordable housing, but don't build in my backyards. Go build it over there, or over there, or someplace else.
Well, what do you think affordable is?
Well, I think affordable is, I think the only, the problem is, there's two problems, okay? First off, the, the raw land cost has just gotten ridiculous.
Yep.
And then the infrastructure to put in is phenomenal, that's the biggest expense they put into. Do I, what do I think is affordable? I, I guess, I look at it and say, and I, and I've talked to people, the fastest selling houses almost in Delaware, Delaware Meadows. You put one of those things on the market, and they're gone. But they're what, a thousand?
Yeah.
Nine hundred square feet? When they were originally built, they didn't have to put a garage in. Didn't have to put a garage in.
And they sold for seventeen thousand.
Yeah, well, Wesleyan Woods sold for fifty-five when they were new. So I'm saying, affordable is, is, I, I look at it and say, if, if we could build under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I don't think you can in Delaware, okay? That's what people look at as affordable. But I don't think we can do it, because first off, we say you gotta have at least, uh, what, twelve, fourteen hundred square feet, I think it is? So if we start at fourteen hundred square feet, boom, that's it. You gotta have a garage, boom, that's it. So we, and a lot has to be this, and everything, it just, it, it, what, what they want, I don't think that Delaware wants, I don't think the people in Delaware really want it, okay? I don't know if we're allowed to build modular homes, but to me, they're great, they're the greatest thing in the world. You can save money on them, and they, as you said, they're well-built, they're not trailers.
Sometimes the components are better built than on-site, because they're building a controlled environment.
That's right.
Now, that, some, some parts of them look a little different than maybe what we're used to, but, but duplexes, which this country and this city built a whole heck of a lot of through the years, decades ago, and we kind of forgot how to do that. Now we're, now we're approving and building them again, you just did tonight.
Zero outliers. We used to allow zero.
Those are well-built, those are, uh, at least meet minimum, because they're certainly, uh, in terms of energy efficiency, far in excess of anything that was built a decade ago. Um, and seem to be, our citizens are buying those and moving in and living them, and they may be coming from outside and coming into the community, but then they, they're, they're our citizens at that point. So there's certainly a market for that sort of unit. And I'm not suggesting that, that's just, you should just build that sort of stuff everywhere, apartments, I think.
But it's part of.
It's part of the whole. It's, it's a piece of the puzzle, and we, our job is to figure out what the pieces are and put the puzzle together in a way that is, that, that is Delaware, you know, with this comprehensive plan. And then, of course, you know, the market has changed, it's gonna change again. I talk a lot to you about demographics, a lot of the changing market is the changing demographics. Uh, you, you can't deny that the baby boomer demographic is, is changing America in fundamental ways, and those of us in the middle, and then it'll have a little blip in time, and then the millennials will do it.
Change it all over again.
It's just, it's just normal. So. And autonomous cars on top of that is a whole other discussion that might change something. It's gonna, it's already has, and they're already out there. These, these are good, important conversations, I think we're at the right moment in our community to have them in, in our comp plan, and we, and we have a lot of information. And we're gonna have to get to a point where we have to make some decisions that, uh, I, I'm sure not everybody's gonna agree with. Uh, and that's okay, as long as I think we're making them straightforward, and we're doing it on data, and we're doing what we think is the best interest of the city of Delaware.
Well, I built my house, I think my lot fees to the city, okay, were less than three hundred dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
Have to hook up the sewer line.
Yeah, it'd be slightly more than that, right?
Yeah. So, I mean, all these things are driving that cost of the house, and there's no way of stopping it. But that, it's there, so I mean, if you just take the, the raw land and, and, God, I don't know how much it costs to put in sewers and storm sewers and electric and gas, water and, and, and everything else.
More expensive to treat the water, so we have to add that into that.
Well, I mean, for a developer to put in.
Just the infrastructure.
Before he builds a house. Here it is.
That's gone up exponentially.
Yeah, I mean, that's gotta be, what, twenty percent of the house cost anyways?
Maybe higher.
Maybe higher.
Yeah.
And you can't get around it.
There are some things we could think about in code to, to, we've talked about them, the width of our streets and, and, and sort of those things. I mean, we want our, we also want our streets to last when, when a developer puts them in, right? That's part of our fiscal sustain, so we have to, we sort of have, and we want, we don't want parking problems, so we kind of have to find those balances, right? Uh, but I think there's room in our market, in our community, and, and ultimately in our hearts and in our minds for, for a diverse, mixed community. I mean, it's what we are, so that, that, that's our DNA. Uh, we've just kind of maybe forgotten it a little bit, like everybody else. So I hope we can maybe just remember a little bit and fit the puzzle pieces together the way we, as a community, and ultimately council sees fit. It was a great discussion.
Good luck.
I'm writing a plan while you're talking.
Good luck.
I have nothing.
Ooh, all right.
Nothing for me?
All right. I think we set our.
Sean, do you have anything that you're here?
Oh, I, I own a modular house, so.
All right, uh, next regularly scheduled meeting will be on December fourth, two thousand nineteen. I may or may not be traveling, uh, once I know, I'll give you guys a heads up, so, so you're aware. Anybody else have any conflicts on the fourth? If anything comes up, just shoot Elaine an email.
Uh, we're also working on, we should have the calendars for next year ready for you at the next meeting, I would hope. Um, the meeting in January will be the third Wednesday.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, so that's, it's just the way the first falls, makes sense, so.
Figged agenda on the fourth? Yet, not sure yet.
Could be.
All right.
Very evasive.
That's very evasive. All right, it is, uh, eight thirty-nine PM, and we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
Good job.